Hello 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 my friends over on YouTube welcome into a little bit more sponsored Stardew with our friends over at HelloFresh getting back into it hopefully doing all the preparations we need to for 1.6 learning everything about the game and the Easter eggs that we can and talking about some like fresh food and meal kit options as as we go along isn't that am I forgetting anything Vips any other details?
I don't think so.
Alright yeah and otherwise we're just having a good fun awesome time are you currently loading up the farm to get us going?
I am.
Awesome awesome soon as the farm is live we will go into it and we will get rocking let me start some tasty jams turn on just some quiet music and yeah we'll get going oh I'm so excited both for the sponsorship and for the Stardew Valley Stardew Fresh
Stardew Fresh also the spirits are in good humor today
Ooh off the bat let's go alright hopefully I know where my volume is at going to check just to be safe just on that double blast in here guys it's eadrums there got it here we had to get to bed pretty quickly last week last night but
last time
last time I mean we can honestly probably just sell a diamond right
have we turned one in?
that is a great question yeah it seems so
oh then yeah
we need purple and red mushrooms still so
I have a purple mushroom
okay I'll go keep those there until I no longer see them highlight uh we need to turn a fire quartz on so I'll put that in the chest um anything else from this list?
I put some more turn in things um in your box for you
gotcha gotcha thank you love uh mine blocks being
bad one
gotcha gotcha oh yeah look at that I can take that and put that with you
I don't think our crops are gonna make it to the end of the season
I have faith I think they're gonna make it go ahead and sell that diamond just cause easy money and I don't know of any additional uses for it off the top map
a diamond?
yeah
um it's a couple of people's like like favorite gifts but
believe it oh goodness gracious
hello?
we already had a disconnect Stardew what you doing?
oh my gosh that was I have the hammer and it was a little intense and meaning to hit
um
oh my gosh
did you make money off me selling the diamond?
do I make money off of you?
no did you?
I don't think so
okay I don't think it gets tallied to the end of the day but
no it does not
if that diamond gets duplicated by that it was not my fault it was not on purpose okay here's very good humor so I will turn in those geodes also turn in stuff that hasn't been turned into the community center
except for the purple mushroom because it's in my pocket
gotcha um yeah sorry not the community center the historical society whatever that is
the library the archives I don't know
yeah that one
to the library Tussie Gunther
hey hey I thought we agreed
I thought we agreed
we're on the same page
do we need a radish? I don't think so
I don't think so
no
like nothing personal Stardew I just I have my own stuff I'm listening to right now you could you could do to be a little quieter let me all just leap alright left in the trash got some geodes alright okay I guess the spirits are feeling real funny about themselves now those are some real jokesters
yeah
yeah real humorous
what makes you say that?
I got ten coal and a clay
were you bad?
I guess I guess I was bad I don't I don't know anymore yeah it's been really sad ooh that should give me a skeleton trying to be a nuisance with it
wait what do we need a purple mushroom?
uh probably need like ten of them or something like that for one of them
oh I found it and it's not ten actually
I was gonna say that's been like our luck alright I'm running off to the mines
have fun thanks I guess I could have gone down with you but I just used one of our beach totems to go
nice chill have fun fishing
I will I love fishing
that's super valid fishing's super fun in like most games that have a fishing menu out and did I just see something? I think I'm crazy alright how far did we make it we almost made it to the bottom yeah we made it to ninety-five I think I can finish this up
I believe in you
thanks we'll see how that goes one down two down about to be a little more doing okay get a few of these oh I got a ladder down didn't even see that what the heck chat they're supposed to be my spotters where you at? munching on some HelloFresh fishing two in Ascension eh fair enough can't be mad at that
it's a day for red mullet let me tell ya
yeah?
yeah
how many you up to? four four goodness misgracious can I not block? I don't know if I'm messing up the timing or the spacing or what I cannot seem to hit the picking imagine because I'm not putting the sword up the time then probably just uh missing the timing that's a little just the tiniest bit of delay on all the hits hey look at that oh you got a lost book good job
antakata tonia
oh goodness well that's a problem
watch
oh that is a problem oh let's go there's gonna be more of a problem come on just give me negative whoa ninety-nine
let's go
hey okay go on now I can do that give me the egg come on game you know you like me oh omnijade well I'll also take that but yeah come on cool come on game be a homie game I need this more than you do come on there you have it there it is there's a ladder though and I oh I was gonna say can I successfully avoid the bat and just rush the ladder yeah there's no apparently I can't just hop the bat but it's a hundred
hey you found a star drop?
I did you found a star drop it's strange but the taste reminds you of Vipsy
what?
that's a little inappropriate but you're my favorite thing
oh
your maximum energy level has increased that is huge
can't wait to go down to the mines and get all of my
yeah enjoy I'm gonna go lava fishing
I had terrible look at the beach
I'm sorry
got a lot of trash
hmm it's fair
Stardew Valley's gross I guess don't clean up after me
we'll clean it up it's mostly Jojarmart I've named them oh come on game there is no reason to give me trash give me one cool firefish something I don't know give me one cool thing ah dang it all trash in these waters what the oh button that's me it's on one oh one
it's eleven forty
uh I lost connection
oh why does this keep happening?
I I don't know darling either your hosting is uh inconsistent or my connecting is inconsistent but something is not working correctly no kept all my loot so
nice
I uh I'm just home now
that's way quicker
uh yeah but it's not necessarily ideal
yeah I know
uh really all I got to sell yeah the rest of my stuff's gonna get sorted in the boxes and then used but we go eh not bad though one eighty off of that and seven fifty off the diamond so that's a good little amount of minutes howdy howdy friend welcome to the bonus stream it's tomorrow
is corn something we need like multiple love at the community center?
that's a great question we'll find out also how does the music keep turning itself back on stop it
stop it's the twenty-third I don't think our melons are gonna be ready by the end of the season however are we supposed to get to? oh wait Jody needed a cauliflower not melon
I couldn't could just mute I'll just pause my music if it starts again for some reason the game keeps turning its audio back on when I get disconnected
I have so much corn
with the music back on um let's see pantry no so we need five gold star corn as one of the quality crops options
okay
um we already have the one singular corn for fall crops
I have five gold star hops
uh not for anything I'm seeing
okay
not seeing hops mentioned at all actually
we are at two gold star corn
cool cool once we're at did I say five or ten?
five
double check just make sure I didn't say it wrong quality drops there we go yep five we already have the five gold parsnips turned in so we either need melons pumpkins or corn uh we need to turn this fire quartz into the community center geodes hardwood is probably a part of a bundle where we need a bunch of them or something purple mushroom is still needed for something?
hmm no
it says it is
oh
um exotic foraging
oh do we have another purple mush?
uh we do
okay cool
I'll grab that and turn that in because I've already grabbed one or two other things that need to be turned in uh apparently red mushrooms need to be turned in look where that is um ah die bundle is at least one um yeah just die bundle to buy what I'm seeing oh that's geologists uh yep so I'll take that one in but can I turn them in from here? no we have we have discovered that just see if I have it on me I can't turn it get a gold get a gold bar done I think we probably have enough to do that now
give me a look I'm so I'm fine oh you're still here too
yeah yeah empty look need more hardwood but we can start gathering that please in because we will get the wood axe upgraded get that done uh I'm gonna take the red mushroom fire quartz and purple mushroom up real quick though yeah we definitely have enough gold here I'm gonna grab the gold and the coal and then go crazy on cooking up gold bars
yep
uh then we'll turn one in and then we'll keep the rest for later there we go work that take these three up and then spend the rest of my time probably in the mines uh oh crap leave with this geode down need to carry that this really there we go guard the crystal double check that yeah dang benefits you can eat it but didn't do any good no die bundle was one of the it was the purple mushroom oh what the it definitely showed a purple mushroom before what the heck? that's a red cabbage changed I swear it changed oh no red mushroom red mushroom I was just being silly okay folks welcome in buddy welcome into the HelloFresh spotters dream okay red mushroom turned in there purple mushroom was somewhere else it was exotic foraging vault uh one of the two left rooms we'll find out are we spying stuffs?
oh I'm selling stuff
ah gotcha
with the adventuring guild because we have so many weapons that we'll never use again so
that's fair
took them
ooh that sounds very fun good luck from your side and hopefully we are lucky on our side and all goes well nobody has to die hehe get it could die and die it's the bug yeah that's fair I'll accept that geology shun bundle done five omnijades let's go uh bring one of those gold bars back I won't go to the the mine today I'll probably just go tomorrow
I'm in the mine now
oh shoot well then yeah definitely won't I'm gonna go grab that gold bar and finish the blacksmith's bundle which is gonna finish the entire boiler room
oh heck yeah
yeah
what's the boiler room reward?
I don't remember I didn't read it quick enough hey thank you much bud yeah I figured if I'm gonna have a bunch of silly costumes then I can give uh people access to controlling any and all of them and hopefully
they're wearing now
well I switched back to default outfit because we are we are at the top of stream but uh somebody wants to spend the bone shards they can absolutely do a haunted wardrobe ritual and uh change it up grab one of these bars
think
yeah some items will just affect the uh the model but some will be like wardrobe like changes like whole outfit changes whereas like I do have this one built for the headhunter memes where if somebody takes my head you know but otherwise yeah I got I got costumes and I'll get more costumes in the future as I beat more games as I get more inspirations for them I got a little list of costume ideas because I have a huge list of names for TTS crow so we'll we'll see how how quickly we get to them because note I did just call it TTS crow um boilers over here blacksmith gold bar bundle complete oh minecart repaired
oh yeah
and we got an extra furnace for free for doing the bars
where all these journals come from? oh I gotta retreat I'm gonna go down here oh I'm on one oh four no I got food next
well dang they did something I think it's gonna be overnight that they they actually repaired the thing though right?
yeah
yeah yeah but if memory serves the one up by the bus stop takes you right to the mine?
oh yeah
heck yeah
and to like cleanse and the quarry
nice yeah it's gonna be dope
except I don't think the quarry is gonna be live yet oh god oh oh no 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 I gotta get out of here without getting hit
I gotta adjust my behavior to upset stupid just a little bit
oh oh I messed up oh I messed up
I bet you mess up
if I get hit by anything else dude I'm down oh and there's a room full of treasure
don't 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 do that
I'm not I'm leaving I'm leaving I'm leaving
goodness gracious
with my precious gems alright
make me anxious
dang it I was so close I was also on one oh four
hmm it's fair it's fair it's rough like these pop them over in I'm checking mail here alright put these geodes over in this box for later perfect at seven regular six omnies we'll keep stacking doing great that's the one hardwood though we really need to go upgrade that wood axe
yeah
big difference
we have
uh enough copper that's a great question um hmm not cooked let me see we're gonna be one one bar shy
okay
oh any coal it's
well I just brought a whole bunch
cool we also have a whole bunch so yeah one twenty-six altogether so we're doing good there I just need more copper itself but you know I might get a bunch from the geodes once I start cracking them open but who to say?
I'm selling some of our hoarding
hmm yeah that's fair we kinda hoarded everybody's gifts and we haven't been giving them to much of anybody
yeah so I'm gonna clean those up a little bit just to make some money cuz why not?
yeah we got four bars we need one more
yep
unless we get a bunch of the precious gemstone which kinda like anybody likes anyway so oh well um do we have any cool crafting recipes we haven't made use of yet?
um we need tree tappers if we have the stuff to do
oh that is such a good point we have not been doing that I will get working on that that's copper bars
so we should probably actually go to the mines and
for copper specifically
yeah
okay yeah we'll do that tomorrow
for copper and iron
uh I'm gonna take these copper bars that I did make real quick and I probably need wood I imagine wood and before it gets too late yeah wood forty wood oof glad to harvest more wood at some point alright in the morning I'll place those tree tabs before we leave and then we should be golden almost all of our plans
oh yeah
pick some minecarts that's that's a huge huge play right there because if the spirits are in good favor I can actually stop by cleanse then go up to the mine and not waste any time at all
hey I think I'm gonna I just reached level five farming so I think I'm gonna take rancher animal products are worth twenty more percent if you would like Hey, I think I'm gonna, I just reached level five farming, so I think I'm gonna take rancher. Animal products are worth 20 more percent if you would like to take tiller.
I'll do, I'll take tiller. I'll do my best to remember that.
Ooh, and then.
Don't let me forget chat.
I always, I also hit level five in mining. I also, I always take geologists.
Yeah.
Chance for gems to appear in pairs. So will you take miner, the plus one ore per vein?
Sure.
Cool. But if you wanna be the geologist, I guess that's cool.
No, I'm not.
It's just my jam.
Totally understand and love.
My PB and J.
Place these tree tabs real quick, place them right next to the farm.
Make sure that each of them are on a different tree.
Yeah.
The melons.
There. Here, and there we go. Melons are ready, so we can uh, turn those in if we need to.
Do we need melon?
I don't know. Highlight them and see if, uh, your little media center thing.
I don't have it.
You just grab the melon.
Oh, yeah, but like when I open my. Hang on, I'll show you in a second. Look.
What are your inventory?
Then not where I was?
Oh, you're in your crafting tab.
Oh. Okay, the gold star melons.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we need the, the stack of five of them.
Yeah, do we have regular melons saved too?
Uh, we got two silver stars.
Okay, we need to take a melon to Demetrius. It's in our quest log.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll take one of these real quick.
Yeah, I don't know what for, but I have melons on me.
Oh, I'm gonna take one of these, uh, silver star ones to him real quick.
Okay. Uh. I have two gold star melons. The gold star melons are gonna have to wait because we're five. And we, we can't plant anymore this season, because if we do. Oh, they're just gonna die on the 28th.
Yeah.
Are we going to the mines still?
Uh, eventually. I gotta make a couple stops. I gotta go up see Demetrius. Uh, I got to, uh, go down see Clint, and then I'm gonna head up to the mine very quickly, and I'm gonna look for.
I'm also, I'll look for.
Uh, Demetrius should. I don't, oh, it's right. Left and up.
Why didn't you just take the cart to the mines and then?
Uh, there, I mean, there's a lot of things I could. Yeah, I don't.
That's really fast to get the minecart stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, within our, our first year before, first winter.
Demetrius, got your melon. Oh, I don't wanna give it to Sully. Oh, you couldn't give it to Demetrius either? Okay, I'm leaving.
Just getting out of the way.
Wow, money. Wow, 24,000 gold.
24,000 or 2400? That's what we're currently at, yeah? Catch, catch. Then, oh, can you move, please?
I'm not over there anymore. Uh-oh.
Oh.
Okay.
Let's see.
I'm sorry this keeps happening. Do you want me to restart my game?
Uh, I don't think it's gonna help, though.
Okay.
This is a couple weeks in a row that something going on.
Sorry, dude. Get your stuff together. Gonna have to go back to playing on the switches.
Oh, you're back at the farm. Mines.
I don't like that there's little eyes in the caves. But that's what we get for picking fruit pans. There's gonna be little eyes in the cave.
Yep. Exactly what that means. Oh, and now Demetrius isn't home. Alright. That, that makes sense. We head into town. Hope I can find him.
He might be lounging at the community center, you know, like he do.
Oh, does he?
Well, not in the community center, but like, yeah.
There is.
Oh, wait, I said I was gonna pop her.
There we go.
Oh, the worms.
550 gold added. City, headed over. Oh, nope, had to go to Clint's. Went head to the mines. Leave the mines. Come back. Hope that I have enough time again. It's not, but I'll be here tomorrow. Oh, getting decent on iron. There's some copper. Oh, also cool. Got two. Oh, now I have three. More thunder eggs for me.
Thunder eggs?
Mm-hmm. Gunther, tell me more.
Sounds like a fun side dish, thunder eggs.
Oh, I got this. Hey, that was 40 pieces.
And yeah. Yeah, I know.
Forty-one. Got a reward for that, or that was just? Oh, did you get a reward? A rare crow.
Oh, heck.
Number eight of eight.
Oh, heck, yeah.
An angry. Lack of better words.
Oh, I can't see him. There's a bad guy.
Going back to bus stop. Time for me to end. I'm just gonna fish at home. Go mining for some copper too. Do we wanna keep any minerals? I don't know.
No.
Hmm. Uh, because I know we also are keeping the amethyst, the aquamarine, the frozen tears. The frozen tears, your boy Sebastian. Nate, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Sure, somebody likes either soapstone, thunder egg, or neck away. I have no idea.
The minerals I don't think are any favorites.
And frozen tears are mineral.
No, I meant like the, um, like, the, like, the minerals that we don't find, like, in the mines, like, so like the sandstone. They come from geodes, the ones that come from geodes, I think were.
Mars said I completed the secret side quest Eggs for Gunther.
Oh, cool.
Hmm. Well. I will. There's also Krobas, who actually like, his only favorites are minerals, I believe. Um, I'll just make a mineral. Wood. Test. There we go. Perfect. Down all the way. Guardian of these. Do it. Hi, Bibs. How was your trip?
It's good.
Good deal. I'm glad to hear it. White chest mineral chest.
I'm putting Omni geode in there.
Ooh, yeah, that's a great place to put it. Geodes, actually. Uh, I think we already have a dwarf scroll three turned in.
If it doesn't say, Gunther will tell you more about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can sell that.
We'll just go ahead and sell it real quick. I don't think Avanum does any good, unfortunately.
I don't think so.
Something they give you like crafting recipe. Gonna be handy. Hmm. Fishing tackle. Hadn't thought about making any of those.
There are one tiny.
It makes it better in the water, slightly increases the bite rate when fishing. Forces fish to escape slower when you aren't reeling them in. Even if they are one time, they do seem like they would be handy.
At least I don't. Or maybe they break after a couple uses.
Maybe. Uh, look it up, darling. Uh, wow, we got a ton of. Ton of bait. Okay. Do we have any food?
We have a kitchen.
Yeah, so. Not really. Oh, we do have snack box. Is. I'll grab some snacks. Be ready to straight to the mines.
Okay.
Got a decent amount of cash, huh? Damn, that scroll wasn't worth a jack.
One gold.
Yeah. Yeah, you can have a dollar for it. Best I can do is one dollar. Pick up my rug. I got mail. Two farmers selling. My knee's acting up again. You know what helps? Rubbing the darn thing with hot pepper. Trouble is, my supplies run dry.
I'll put hot peppers in the chest.
Alright.
I'm not gonna water the crops that aren't on this spring.
We do have a gold hot pepper that, uh, the community center doesn't seem to need. When you have hot peppers. Oh, yeah, we're pretty good on hot peppers. Do you have another hot pepper on you?
Yeah.
Alright, then I'll take this one and we'll go give it to George.
I was gonna do that later.
I think we can just go ahead and bust it out real quick.
But we're going to the mines, optimize mine time.
And yeah, but, I mean, like, I'm ready to go now, so we could just go give him this pepper and then be done.
I did. I put the pepper away.
Okay. I will see you in the mines. Uh, you gonna like floor 10?
Uh, yeah. Do you hacken up a hairball?
Yeah, I think she.
Gross.
Stop eating hair.
Yeah, stop that. It's icky.
Over it, you good? It's a wah-wah if you need it. In this house?
Yeah.
No.
Don't need to that hot pepper.
You know, he's good. Uh, oh, there's George. Let's see the back of his head. Took you long enough. What are you talking? I got your mail an hour ago.
You should just go to Clint's.
Oh, yeah. Oh, wrong button. Gold. Alright, you still on 10 or did you move?
No, I'm on 10 still.
Cool. Eleven. Gotcha. Ooh. Oh. We found our copper. Eh, yeah?
Lots of bugs. There's copper down here.
Trying to get the little sand frog to come towards me.
Oh, and another ladder.
Got him. Ooh, cherry bomb. Hey, man, watch this. Taking it anyway. Over here? Yeah, there it is. Out here. Copper.
Which ladder do you wanna take? I think they both go down to the same.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to imagine. I'll take the top.
Yeah.
Yep. Same ladder even. Copper this way.
Got you.
I thought you had me.
I did.
Uh. Little copper.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's normal rock. Only look to see it.
Yeah, I'm going through a ton of rocks.
Same. They're in this place out. Oh, wow.
Ladder.
Nah, good deal.
Our side.
There it is. Ooh, I thought that layer above started to become infested with monsters right as I was leaving. Punches. Easy. Copper. Turn the whole. There you go.
Ladder.
Bug. Uh, there's still a little copper in this layer. I'm gonna go.
Ladder.
Oh, wow, you're zooming. Yep. I came, ah, there it is. Need the first ladder here.
Ladder.
Oh my goodness. Are you finding copper too, or?
Well, now I am on this one. I'm not gonna go down. I'm on 18.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna finish searching 18, but.
There's some slime up there. I don't see anything.
I'm not seeing any copper so far on 18. Ladder's off to the far left. No copper.
Ah, bug. He won't catch me. Ah. No copper?
No copper.
Good.
Infestation. Ready your weapons.
Weapon wedded.
Weapon wedded. Comfort, oh.
Bro never saw comfort.
Ah, don't let him get you. I'm coming.
Two for one special.
Oh. That was a lame infestation.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. I was like, wait a minute. You clear the way, but don't go too fast.
Right, right.
The ladder's gonna be after we defeat all the animals. Yeah.
Seems they kind of spawn based on you, so I was able to get the jump on that one. A bunch swimming. Think we're through in the middle. Oh. I was thinking I'm getting disconnected.
Aw. Almost half.
Uh, what did you? Oh, well, when I killed that slime, it turned into a ladder for me, but not the same for you. Um, but yeah, that's really frustrating.
That's okay. It's almost half time.
Um.
I'm really sorry it keeps this.
Try reconnect. Uh, start you?
Hmm.
Yeah, just, uh, trouble reconnecting, unfortunately.
That's lame.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me go to bed and.
I mean, it might be that you can, you can just reset it and alright, but.
It's still frustrating nonetheless.
Yeah, it's just, oh, there we go. Not connected. Alright, at least we didn't lose any of that loot. That was, that would've been 20 copper. That would've sucked. Uh, speaking of which, I think all of our copper's cooked now. At least all the copper that was cooking.
I just started these.
Oh, wow. Good job. Uh, that counts for their own. We'll take that. Uh. Looking literally holding.
Oh, I don't have enough coal. Oh, no, just kidding. I'm out of copper ore. I'm out of copper ore.
Okay, okay. I will go see Clint in the morning with a wood axe and we'll be able to clear all the logs on our property. Get the hardwood bundle finished. Uh, in about two days or so.
Yeah.
I'd say that's a good goal for today even. Uh, and then anything else we accomplish after that can just be considered extra.
Yeah, sure.
Cool. Simple goals, simple chill, fun times. That's what startups good for. Walking in and enjoying yourself for a little while.
For 16 hours and.
Yeah, sometimes. Tease the road.
It's raining today.
It is. Good deal. Alright. Grab out copper bars, five of these. Ooh, lightning. Cookie. Um, I think that's all I should. Yeah, we have enough. Does?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. I'm gonna go see, well, he doesn't open till. So I'm gonna be updated by pushing into. Then. Guess in the meantime, while we wait on the act, do you wanna spend more time in the mines or do you wanna go somewhere else?
Hmm? You wanna try to hit the bottom of the mine?
You can try. What is the, the bottom layer? I forget.
I think it's.
Like 120 or something, or 150?
I don't remember.
Oh, that's. We'll find out. Yeah, we can, we can shoot for it. Gonna help keep me safe.
I have a big scary sword, so.
All this, all this fishing experience, I'm still catching the hell out.
It's just about looking. Specifically with our farm.
Garbage, garbage, garbage. In ya go. Select what you can, sell what you can. Alright. Time to go annoy Clint. Dang it. Pointer doesn't always exactly line up with where I think it does. Some of the. Red tool. Axe. You. Alright, and now head to the mines. You headed to the mines?
Yep, heading that way.
Ooh. Bottom. Yeah, yeah. So far, there's no sign of the bottom. So how low does it go? Good question. Okay, I'm gonna wait, wait for you on 100.
What level are you on?
100. And we'll just try to speedrun. Oh, hello. Let's go.
Ladder.
Wow, alright. Uh, grab that quartz and we're good. Ooh, hell of slimes. I believe wild algae is pretty decent for health.
Well, at least they're not. Down here.
Oh, yeah. Everywhere. Ladder appeared at the other ladder. Row two.
I'm pretty low health.
Uh, here, here, before we go anywhere. Um. Oh, went down.
But there's nothing down here. Red.
Yeah.
Ah, little guy.
Got him. Look out, poor. We got space out, yeah. Oh, this slime is getting me. Got those bats. They eat like crazy. That's better. Yep. Alright. Oh, yeah, cookies were way better. Okay, okay, okay. Um, the spice berry will help a little bit.
Oh.
Yeah. Ah, there was one.
Ooh, hey, Ubs.
Alright.
Idiot kid. I might be lying.
Fish would like them.
Where's the ladder?
Yeah, let me out.
Oh, wow.
Just don't wanna deal with those slimes. They don't. Oh, magma geo. There's an upside.
Don't know ladder.
Same. Oh, ladder. Mm-hmm. Good eye. Ooh, that's a lot. That's a lot. Come on, come on, come on.
Well, some of them's got lasers.
Yeah, I know, but we can dodge most of them and then get the, the rest all at once. Alright, I just got some cave carrots. I'm gonna eat one. I'm gonna give you one. There we go. Now we can, we can kind of strategize rather than accidentally just showing up in a room with a bunch of magic. Alright, alright.
I have a bomb.
I also have a bomb? You wanna just drop some bombs on different sides of the room?
Yeah, but.
I'm gonna go far and then run up. You, uh, drop one close and then run right. Alright, alright, and go.
Oh, I can't. Oh, they annihilated me.
No.
Man, I'm gonna have to go pick up all my stuff from Marlin.
It's alright, it's alright. I'll get, uh, uh. I'll get 105 unlocked real quick and then we'll be alright.
Oh, that was a big number.
Yeah, it happens. But we've, we've been way out of the curve. We've had no major mistakes.
Yeah, until now.
Well, I mean, even now, it's like, eh, you know, pretty recoverable.
No, Marlin, I don't need new sword. All my stuff back. Oh, and I gotta pay for it. No mail on the meat. At least I didn't lose my. I have no energy left. I'm going home. I'm gonna take it.
We're at the point where you really gotta stock up with like some food or something.
Yeah.
Uh, we could buy a bunch of food from the bar.
That's fair. Or we could just upgrade our house.
Also fair. I just figured that would be more effort.
Yeah, oh, it definitely is.
Give me an exit, you dang thing. Ooh, excuse me?
Oh, no.
Cool, cool. Yeah, I love that.
Get out of there.
105.
Oh, it keeps going.
Yeah, of course, of course. Why would that be anywhere near done? Ugh. It's okay, I'm okay. Not too bad. A nice little stack of geodes going. Thank you. Little bed. Hey, it's my bed. Move over. Uh. Warrior ring. Hey, level four combat, let me go. Plus five HP and I can now make a warrior ring. Oh, level four mining. I have my pickaxe. Proficiency goes up, transmute. Ooh, sorry to hear, buddy. If that is your team, uh, may they, may they bounce back? Not, not super huge on the, on the footballs myself, but, uh, I, I hope that no matter what team it is, even if this, uh, technically can't exist, you know, I hope everybody wins.
What in nanos other?
Your second team? Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, Bibz is, uh, is also watching the big game.
Ooh.
Explosion was heard in there. Okay, I wasn't crazy.
Glittering boulder.
Oh, the glittering boulder. You have to teach me about this.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I couldn't. I couldn't, uh, I couldn't tell you enough about any team, honestly, to say that I have a favorite, but I am glad that, uh, able to enjoy with one of your, with one of your top three especially, taking it to the, the, the big end. Huge. Um, I don't know, one of these days I might pick a team. It'll get into fantasy football or something. It'll help me enjoy it a little bit more. Just never really had a, a team that I was super, like, down for. Minnesota AF, fair enough, fair enough. Hate the Lakers and Dallas Stars, buddy. Eh, okay, fair enough. I don't feel like they get a lot, a lot of love from outside of their communities anyway, though, to be fair. Um, going to the saloon real quick, see if we can get any good food from there. Oh, wow, they don't open till noon, though. That is more of an issue.
Um. We're going fishing.
Going fishing? Alright, have fun fishing, Goofy. Uh, I am gonna try to, hmm, do something useful before I go. Waiting a day or two on my axe and I'll get a note from, it's ready. Lakers beating Minneapolis Lakers, Dallas Stars. Ah, I gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, part of the, it's actually part of my, like, disconnection is, like, um, my, my dad was a Rams fan back when I was a kid. And then the Rams moved around the same time that my dad moved. So I was like, well, Super Bowl, me. That was mostly just because I was, I was mad at Vegas for taking the Rams. They, they didn't have anything to do with it.
Damn, how old is Usher?
Meh, ah, man, I don't know. That's a great question. He's probably in his 40s or 50s, but I'm, I'm not gonna say. Cause I don't, I don't know.
He's the halftime.
Ah, gotcha.
That's why I'm watching halftime.
Yeah, fair enough.
12-year-old me screaming right now.
Ah, it's only 10. Goodness gracious. We got time to, like, go sell some stuff, come back. Then grab some food, then run down to mine. That's right. Uh, sell some stuff like this.
Oh my god.
What?
There was no getting that fish, dude. I opened my bar and it shot straight up.
I know how that goes. He's not.
Alicia Keys?
I don't know, nothing about it, Goofy.
I didn't hear nothing of Alicia coming in.
I, I just found out Usher was involved. If I'm being 100% honest.
That's okay.
I see a lot from my, my wizard tower, but I do not, I do not watch the football from up here.
That's what I'm here for.
You put your skeleton in the bar?
Yeah, did you find him?
That was a little jumpscare, yeah. There we go. Alright, um, beer is actually pretty decent for energy and health and it's pretty cheap. Bread, good for both. Probably the cheapest item. No hash browns. Oh, it's a recipe. And then you need potatoes and oil.
And a kitchen.
Need my microphone in my throat. I keep getting a little, I mean. Okay, that's a little better. Not a lot. I think, I think I'm just a little out of it today. That's alright, though.
Rah.
It's the bread. I don't know where the mines. Take my handy dandy little arc cut we set up. Artist. Mines. Mines of Moria. Go through your attack. Yeah, yeah. Oh, damn, oh shit, damn. What'd you get? What'd you get? You ain't got noth- oh, okay, you might got something. Oh, well, got a access for all I need. You ain't? Eh, think? You missed. You missed again. You suck. Stuck on a bush, stupid. Give me. Ooh. We got a few in. Hang on, this way. Didn't think they had to go around. They're not, they're not very clever. What? What, what does that mean? The slimes have like little symbols above their head. What does that mean? Did I befriend the slimes somehow? I befriended the slime somehow. I'm not even kidding.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's got like a little heart above its head and it's not, it's not attacking. It's just like dancing around and, ah, it's no longer, no longer the case.
No longer the case.
Yep, yep, yep. I am now a liar.
I saw it, though. I looked over.
Yeah, I was like, what, what's going on?
Where's this fish?
Uh, move. Ah, dang it. Damage anyway. Bro, personal space. Bro, rev up. Bubble. Bubble. Need ladder. Didn't rush it. Yeah. Alright, we're down to 108. Can get 110. Do it today. This one and then be ready for war. Yeah. Ooh, and it's a boost of stuff. Alright, alright. Get this dude. And got it. Ooh, that rolled. Alright, keep an eye out for ladders. Go on and run, 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 run. Okay. Got room to move, got room to move. Alright. This is a decent little spot. Can't get at me, but can get who when he comes. Ooh, that complicates my problem. Nevermind. Oh, no. Bad. I don't know what I meant to do, but that, that works. Bread. Love bread. It is good. Harbs, mm, tasty. Taking a bread. Guys, I haven't heard about it already. Learn more about HelloFresh by following my link. My code. Can zoom right through this one. Zoom, zoom, zoom. Left. Awesome. Woo. Game moving, doing great. That's a lot of boxes. Ready? All the boxes, uh, get rid of stuff that's going away. Fiber for sure. Uh. I just need one more. Come on, game. Get 110. The noble plan. How you doing, Bivz?
I'm good.
Fishing?
No, I'm home now.
Oh, cool. Doing there?
Hmm, turning in all my stuffs, all my fish.
Nice. Next day or two, Clint should send me a missive and I will get a bunch of hardwood harvested off of those, uh, logs at home. We'll have another bundle then.
Okay.
The construction bundle. Might help with our house upgrades, I don't know.
Oh, no, we have to get our house upgrade from Robin. We can do that anytime.
Well, I, I wasn't sure if there was like an additional like upgrade thing or like upgrade materials that we got for it.
Yeah, I know. I don't know.
Let me out. Yay. Alright, chest on 110. Base boots.
Space boots.
It boots. They give you plus four defense and plus four immunity as opposed to three and three like the firewalker boot. And they are purple. Purple boots. Honestly, uh, we need to pay more attention for the little hat store.
Yeah.
Because I need a good hat. Been wearing the same one since the very beginning.
Me too. Actually, I don't think I'm wearing a hat.
At the moment. Unless you're wearing like a little flower headband or something.
It was a good halftime.
I'm glad.
Yeah, back to only glancing over at the score every now and then, cause it's not that deep. Well, I mean, if you like the Super Bowl, I'm really, really happy for you, but I, I'm just watching it. Not like in depth, like glancing, making sure that I'm at least in the loop. I'm in the loop.
Doesn't sound like a bad way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we have tons of family who watch and I have a ton of friends who are watching right now. Yeah.
Go to sleep for the night.
Good night.
Good night. Still making money. Heck yeah, heck yeah.
It is the last day of the season.
Ooh, and, oh, there's an event happening.
The Moonlight Jellies.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I forgot, I forgot.
Will you be my date to the Moonlight Jellies?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go, I'll go to the Moonlight Jellies with you. Sounds fun and cute. Uh, that's tonight, though, right?
Is tonight at 10:00 PM.
So we can't do anything at the beach until then? If memory serves?
Hmm, no, I think, I don't know.
I think, I think that's how it works.
I think we might be able to, cause it's just an event.
Well, usually the events, like, they're, they're setting up for the event or what.
Yeah, but everyone's just going to watch the Moonlight Jellies. I don't know.
I don't know. I'm gonna take some geodes by Clint and then I'm gonna go to, uh, try to get more of the mines figured out before 10:00 PM.
Okay, cool. Hey, take a beach totem with you. We have some.
Oh, that's such a great idea.
And then we'll just warp down there at 10.
Yeah, or like right before 10.
Yeah, they're in the silver one. Yeah, but the only problem is, is we are gonna have to walk back or pay to get, I think.
Yeah, that's.
Um, I'm gonna clear trees today.
Good luck. That, the slammer looks really good, I'm not gonna lie.
So, oh, the hammer.
Yeah. The minus two speed does look like it would suck, though. I'm not, might have to test it out. Eh, heck it, we walk.
If it's okay with you, I think I'm gonna go to Robin's and move our coop.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'm gonna move it down here, cause when we add ducks, they'll swim in this little pond.
That's okay. That's okay, G.
I'm just gonna clear this area.
Uh, I don't know that Clint got my axe done, so I might have been wrong about getting geodes done, yeah. Unless the one piece of mail, like, erupted.
I don't know.
I think that's how, right? Head to town real quick. Check on Clint. Go for Clint's trashcan. Hey, buddy, you got that done?
Yes, he did get it done.
Alright, so the other message just interrupted. Oh, didn't mean to do that. Would get to know that does that. Um. That's a geodes. Copper, nice. Don't know that we've had that yet. Hellbite? Neat looking. Um. Pretty sure we already have that granite. And I don't know, calcite. Go find out. Go ask the man, him shell. Can we just check by reading him? Uh, okay, so we just don't have calcite. Bring that in real quick. Bring us up to like 42 or something. Crazy. Anything for me? Alright. Uh, now travel back home the fast track real quick. How we doing, Goofy?
Good.
Good deal. Tada. Two and the mines I go. Uh, well, actually, let me just go ahead and get that hardwood done. I said I was gonna. What is it? Logs? Wait, it's the stumps of the log. Or maybe it's bull. We'll go to the bull. Oh, nope, axe cannot hit the logs yet, so it's just the stumps. Hardwood. Here's just the total one. Oops, oh, no, shit. I know, actually, the actual wood, is it automatically getting moved somewhere? What's going on? You know, they're picking up the hardwood. I don't see, or maybe that's all that's coming out of it and I'm just crazy.
Yeah, I took the stump, so I'll come.
Heard of the stumps from the chicken coop there.
Oh, thanks. The coop from getting ready moved?
Oh, dang it. Oh, you can use this space for something else.
Yeah, we can put different. Honestly, we can leave the chickens here for a little bit because I am out of the, another nap, but I still need to clear that area.
Sure. Fair. 14 HUD. Good round for anymore. There them. Oh no, oh, got a mahogany seed. A mahogany tree. Never known. This one. It's not wrong. Construction, ah, construction. Bridge repair. Once we get the whole thing done.
That's the bridge to the quarry.
Gotcha. Got to finish fall foraging, winter foraging, and exotic foraging. But we just got a free charcoal can killed.
Nice.
There's ten pieces of wood into one piece of coal. That's super useful, but if we're having trouble getting, if we're getting, if we're having trouble getting coal. Going handy. Heck yeah. Anything else you want to accomplish today before we haul it?
I'm just going to the festival again.
Yeah, that sounds good by me. Nice little short stream. Just a friendly reminder. That you should go say hello to our friends at HelloFresh. We'll come down somewhere.
Oh no, my tree fell in the water.
Hate when that happens.
That's why I wear no glow ring and two magnetic rings.
Yep.
On my mainsail.
Like those full strength magnet rings or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I wear two of them.
Even just with my like one and a half power one right now. I have plus two and my. I'm collecting quite a bit, no matter how far it is. Late. Energy. Napping before the festival.
Yeah, for real.
Oh wait, wait. Both at the same time. Which energy you get? Ah crap, I'll just, I'll just snack. You get some sleep. Still have some extra food that I bought earlier. There we go. Alright, ready to take bibs to the festival.
You're using a beach totem?
Yeah, sure, let's use them. Don't really use them any other times, so.
I, I mean, I use them to go fish, but.
Yeah.
Get ready. Try to give the beach work to you.
Oh, sorry. Oh gosh dang it.
Well shoot.
Well, let's walk it out.
Yeah. What a, what a waste of these totems.
That's why we have the soundboard. Now I remember. Heard exactly what moments like that happen. Yeah. Yeah, I'll own that. I'll own that tomorrow. Oh whale. Hello everybody. I'll go start over here, you can sit. There's a shop.
What's in the shop?
Moonlight Jellies banner, starport decals. We place inside your house. Modern rug, e-foam pudding, plus four fishing.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, it costs 5,000, but imagine. Also some cloud decals for inside your house. I'm at. Let's dive in. Airline. Sure, yeah. Yeah, that's fair. Moonlight Jellies. Wonder how they taste? I would never try it. Right, right, of course. Oh, okay. That's a great question. But it's also probably a question of whether or not they're poisonous or bad, because I believe octopus is probably one of those ones that can pull. I don't know. Could probably camp.
I've talked to everyone.
Uh, I haven't talked to everybody yet. I'm almost there. I saw one glowing in the distance. Once we launch the candleboat, they'll come up to the docks and say hello. It's neat. He's restrained. There, I just saw something glowing. Oh, it's gone. Nice supply force. We're out of the dark. Here he is now. Yeah, a little bit. Hey Clint, my special shoes tonight. No one noticed. I mean, it's kind of hard to notice. Our feet are eight inches wide, you know? Uh, did the wizard make an appearance?
I think so.
Maybe go look around the beach, see if anybody may have.
If he did, we could be hiding.
Oh, oh, the old folks are over here. And yeah, the bridge is up.
Oh, the bridge is up?
Yeah, I remember seeing the jellies once as a little girl. Oh, I jumped the toy when they arrived. Harvey? Why you looking at me like that? They're not good. Linus? I'll just sneak up when the jellies arrive. I don't want to bother anyone. Not Linus. Harvey?
Forget to talk to them. For the wizard. Wizard is all the way back up.
She got me. I had a feeling he'd be tucked somewhere off in the corner. Yeah, there he is. Hiding in the bush. Bush wizard. How'd you find it back here? Well, I was well hidden. Perhaps you were blessed with a gift of clear points, or perhaps I was looking for the wizard in particular. Looking for the one dude with purple hair and wizard robes. Hey, I'm paying my respects to another bygone soldier. Yeah, fair enough. Catch you later again. Alright, I think I have talked to everybody.
Didn't talk to Lita, so.
Nope.
Can you send the candlelight boat off though?
I'll talk to the mayor. No.
Okay, love.
Um... Nope.
Be there in a sec.
You're good. I'm gonna go hang out with the emo kids. There we go. Yeah, fit right in. Moonlight. I could mention the green one and now every time I look to see if I see any that are green. They never do, but maybe one in there, I don't know. Oh, there is. Ah ha! Have to ADHD out before the green one appears. Apparently, that one is rare. Put into the little pink haired child. Does seem kind of rare. Seems like there's only the one. We'll click it. See it, I see it. Also like a bunch of other stuff illuminated underneath the water we can see. Can't quite tell what any of it is, but... Maybe you got some people diving out here. Maybe y'all got like a, uh, unsolved murder or something. Night that dude. Get good sleeps. We wrapping up soon, so. Good timing. Hope you, uh, had good games and hope you get good rest. Waiting for other players. There we go. Alrighty, well. Think that'll about do us for this week, but we'll be back at it again next week, maybe for a little bit longer, maybe for a little bit near around the same time, but. By the way, it's been fun and it's been bonus time, and time that we don't usually use to stream, so. All together, I think we're doing pretty good, but, uh, as it is a sponsored stream, I'm gonna remind you guys one last time. That, uh... If, uh, you are all interested in supporting the stream and, uh, saying thank you to our sponsors, you can go to my link down below or you can use my code. Um, and, uh... Otherwise, if, uh... You'd like to hang out, then I will see you again on Tuesday. We will return for some Baldur's Gate. I'll do my best to get some good rests, you'll do your best to get some good rest, some good eats, all that. And, uh, we will be back around to it again, uh, later this week. Alrighty, well, that's, that's all we got. Uh, anything you'd like to say before we get out of here bibs? Nope. Alright, say bye to everybody.
Bye.
Alrighty, catch you later guys.